Hi Bob!
Hi! Can you hear me? You got me? I've got you! Absolutely!
All better.
Okay, microphone is on. Thank you for those who are watching online for your patience. Today is October 16th, 2025. Welcome to the Southport Planning Board meeting. Tonight, for your viewing pleasure, we'll call the meeting to order, have the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, approval of the agenda, public comment, staff reports, other business announcements adjourned. And tonight, it's brought to you advertisement-free courtesy of the City of Southport, so you'll see no ads. So why don't we get started? Tonight, I have Robert Lambert and Kevin Lockland are remote, so they're dialed in. John Bové is absent, so Ed, as the alternate member, will stand in for John, and Ed has all the voting rights and privileges as a regular member. So that being said, for those that can stand, please stand. We'll do the invocation.
As we begin this meeting, let us pause to center on the purpose of may we be guided by fairness, facts, and the long-term good of our community. Help us listen with respect, debate with civility, and decide with courage. Let our actions reflect transparency, integrity, and wise stewardship of the resources entrusted to us. May we seek practical solutions and uphold the law and the public trust. With gratitude for those who serve and those who participate, we commit ourselves to the common good. Amen.
And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. Nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
So can I have a motion to approve the agenda, just so we know? Under the other business, we'll add planning staff input, alderman liaison input, and planning board input. So if I could just have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some others.
Thank you. Motion been made by Fred. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. Thank you. Motion been made. Second, any further discussion? Are none of our favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Must be a lag time on that. So, public comment. Do we have anything for a public comment tonight? Anybody? Once, twice, three times? None? Okay. Thank you.
It'd be appropriate for them to mute their microphones.
Yeah. On the phone, if you can make sure your mics are muted, please. Good point. Why don't we jump right into staff reports? This is me in Europe.
Good evening, Chair Ashley, and members of the planning board and those dialing in remotely. Thank you very much. This evening, I'm just going to go through kind of a monthly recap. Okay, next, please. That's fine. Next slide. For you, just kind of what's been going on with the different boards that we are working with throughout the last month. So we had, starting in the beginning of the month, on Monday, October 6th, was our first Board of Aldermen meeting, and the Osprey Landing Phase 4 annexation was approved at that meeting. That's what some of the planning items that were on the Board of Aldermen agenda is what I was going to be going over. So this annexation is Phase 4. It's approximately 10 acres, and it was about 43 single-family lots. So that public hearing was held on the 6th, and it was approved unanimously. The second meeting of the Board of Aldermen was held just last Thursday, October 9th. The Southport 2050 Comprehensive Plan was adopted. We held our public hearing, and it was locally adopted, so that was wonderful news. So we'll be sending that plan to Division of Coastal Management for their certification by the Coastal Resources Commission.
Nice work by everybody involved.
Yes, thank you.
Three years?
Not just the two.
In the making, yeah.
Yeah.
Lot of input, too. Lots of input.
But we made it. We made it. We had a lot going on at the same time, so.
Nicely done. Congratulations.
Yes, and I really appreciate the steering committee and all of the public comments that came in through that effort, and we had also our different community members that came in and sat in for meetings as well. So that was really wonderful, coming together with everyone. The next item that we had at the Board of Aldermen meeting on the last week was the Special Events Bed and Breakfast Text Amendment that Planning Board had worked on for several months and then brought it forward to the Board of Aldermen. Really wasn't quite what they were looking for. Put together some language, sent it back to the Planning Board. At the public hearing that we had, that we had to have a second public hearing on this text amendment, one of the bed and breakfast owners here in the city was here with some comments and brought up a lot of issues that he felt that needed to be addressed, and they were very good comments that he brought forward. So we are going to be seeing this back at the Planning Board in the next couple months. The Board of Aldermen asked us to take a look at some different language, a little bit more language, to increase some of the availability of events at these places, and they also want us to take this information to the bed and breakfast owners in the city. So there are three bed and breakfasts in the cities now, so they want us to go to the owners, sit with them, see how they can think we can make this work, so we can have some good dialogue with them before we bring it back for their consideration.
Can we have something ready for January of '26 on that?
I don't see why not, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Thank you.
And then the last public hearing we had was for our UDO Article 3 and Article 8 updates that the Planning Board UDO Committee had been working on for several months again. That board, that committee had been brought together in March of 2025, so for about six months, the committee was working on some changes that, one, the Board of Aldermen had kind of brought up some ideas, the planning staff had some things that they knew that weren't working quite right in the UDO, and with the loss of our extraterritorial jurisdiction, we needed to make sure that we added back in some of the uses that are required by statute as well as remove the zoning districts and those uses that were removed as part of this change as well. At that meeting, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of different things. There were a lot of changes in that text amendment. So what, after the public hearing, the Board of Aldermen elected to adopt the text amendments that were necessary for the loss of the ETJ itself, so that would be removing the different zoning districts and the land uses associated with those. So there were nine different land uses that were then eliminated from the UDO. Then they also made sure to include the adult entertainment establishments and the mobile homes on single lots. Those were added in. And we also made sure that the attachment piercing establishments were added, just so we had it, since we have had some interest in that use recently, and those were going to be permitted by special use in the highway commercial zone only. I know originally, we had considered the business districts and highway commercial, but they will only be going to the highway commercial with a special use permit. And we also have some drive-through standards now for commercial establishments, and those are only going to be allowed in the highway commercial and the planned unit development zoning districts. And if anyone wanted to come in with the conditional zoning, they could consider that as well. So those were the updates that they made. The remaining updates, we are going to be adding to the UDO considerations that we're going to be speaking about here. I'll go over that here in one moment, so that the board is going to be looking at some prioritization of some updates coming up in the next month and several months forward, so we can talk about those. So that's what we, planning-wise, what happened at the Board of Aldermen meetings this month. We had our Board of Adjustment meeting we had on October 28th, or I'm sorry, September 23rd, so it's the fourth Tuesday of every month, and that's at the Indian Trail Meeting Hall. We had one case on that agenda, and there was a special use permit modification. We had an approval of an accessory dwelling unit that had taken place a couple months ago. Once they started building the ADU, they realized they wanted to make some modifications, and that required a change in the footprint, and it was considered a major modification of that permit, so they had to go back to the Board of Adjustment to get this modification. So it couldn't be administratively changed because of the change in the footprint of the building itself. So that went forward, and it was approved, so that now they can add a little more room in the bathroom for themselves than their ADU. So the next regular meeting was scheduled for October 28th, but it has been canceled. There were some scheduling conflicts with the attorneys and clients for the applicant for this appeal that was coming forward. So we are now trying to schedule a special meeting for the November meeting. The November meeting is on November 25th, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so we're trying to find a date that we can have that meeting earlier in November to accommodate everyone. So we will make sure that we get that word out when we have the date available, and then get the agenda out to everyone as soon as we can. So, yes.
May I ask what that application or variance was for?
It was an appeal to a staff's interpretation or decision. So the one that was coming through was a code enforcement violation for a commercial parking lot on residential land, so that's what is going to be moving forward. So it was appealed to our code enforcement actions. Okay, so then the next.
Wait, hold on.
Yes, sir.
If you wouldn't mind, could you expound on that just a little bit, on what the enforcement action was for?
It was a property that was using, there was a piece of residential property that was being, is being used as a commercial parking lot. So it's zoned commercial, or zoned, I'm sorry. It is zoned residential, and it has a non-residential parking lot on it that is there not be able to operate.
Got it. Thank you. I'm just thinking about for future UDO.
Sure.
It's always good to know what's going on behind the scenes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question on that. Is it a vacant lot, or does it have a residential building?
It's a vacant lot. Yes. So that's Board of Adjustments. That's what we've got going on right now. Then we also, with the Historic Preservation Commission, they held their September 3rd meeting to confirm and send on their final recommendations to the Board of Aldermen, some changes that were made to the design standards that are, that accompany the district overlay for the zoning district itself. So they did, they went forward. The October meeting was then canceled, it's the first week of October, for several different reasons. And then there was a joint Board of Aldermen and Historic Preservation Commission meeting that was just yesterday, on the 15th. There was a lot of good discussion about the standards and different things, processes happening with the Historic Preservation Commission, and after discussions with the Board of Aldermen and the Historic Preservation Commission, the Board of Aldermen is going to be providing a specific list. They're going to be sending requests, questions, considerations for changes for the historic preservation to consider. They'll be sending those to staff. Staff will compile those and then take them to their next meeting, which is November 5th. So Wednesday, November 5th, their meetings are always the first Wednesday of every month at 4:00 PM. They will then consider and vet the changes or the considerations that the Board of Aldermen may be bringing forward, and then those will then be taken back to the Board of Aldermen at a later meeting, once we get those taken care of.
Now, if I could, is there any further action that we need to take at all as a Board?
No, there's no more, there's no other action that the Planning Board needs to take at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that is, those are kind of our updates for all of our boards that we have. The Forestry Committee did meet this week, and they were talking about, and they're getting ready for their annual planting. There's a, we have a really good amount of, I mean, we've got several trees this year, several different species that will be being planted, so we're excited about that, and that'll be happening, I believe, in February, January or February. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So be looking out for that, and they're looking for places to plant them around the city. So that is going to be, that's always a really great activity that happens throughout the city and keeps us a part of the Tree City USA. All right. Next, please. Thank you. The next update I wanted to go over is our multimodal acceleration plan. So this is a plan that the Southport, the city has received a grant from NCDOT to prepare this plan, and it's to identify key multimodal projects and outline clear steps for the implementation and ultimately supporting more walkable and bikeable communities. So multimodal, this is where we're talking about bikes, walking, jogging, multi-use trails for connectivity. This also will include safety enhancements to crosswalks or in corners, or where we need to have some safety improvements, even on streets and other places. So those are types of projects that you are going to see coming forward. So we have been working on this for several months, for about six or eight months at this point. We've had a couple steering committee meetings with this, and we've been compiling existing conditions from the Brunswick County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, as well as some information from our parking study and transportation study that we did, and our comprehensive plan itself. So there's a lot of projects that have been brought up, so we need, we're looking at eight to 10 projects for this plan itself. So they are going to put these together, they're going to be, you know, paper-ready, they're going to be street-ready, so we can have them prepared, and they're going to help us find and identify grant opportunities for these projects, so we can prioritize those. So when the NCDOT State Transportation Improvement Process starts, we have some plans that we can move forward with those, for those considerations for prioritization, as well as if there's any other grant opportunities that are made available, we will have projects ready. So when you go out for grants, they really want to see true projects that are able to be moved forward. So we're hoping that this plan and its format and the timing of it will be able to get some things together and really start working on some bike and pedestrian projects through the city. I know it's very important, it's one of the, you know, a lot of the comments that we got from the comprehensive plan were, yes, everybody bikes, everybody walks, but there's really a safety component to that, we need to make sure that we're taking care of, and this will help with that a lot. So as part of this, we are having a virtual meeting next Thursday, October 23rd at 6:00 PM. This is a one-hour meeting, just one hour from 6:00 to 7:00, and this is where the public will be able to hear about the plan in more detail, get information on each one of the projects, and then have the opportunity to give their feedback on the projects, or your feedback from projects of, or if there's any other places that we aren't seeing, you know, a project that you think would be an opportunity that has been missed at this point as a listing. So definitely, I hope everyone will take the time to meet next Thursday. You do have to register online, and the QR code on the screen, you can use that, or you can go to the city's website on the Development Services page, so it's cityofsouthport.com, and then go to. So it's cityofsouthport.com and then go to the Development Services page. And then the multimodal project has its own button. So you can go there, you'll see the survey as well. We have an online survey that is available starting now and through November. Yes, ma'am.
Two questions. One, is this the survey that you sent to us in email today? And number two, I've heard you say they want us to have this ready. So my question is, they, I'm presuming is North Carolina D O T, but I want to clarify that. And the second is, who's the project leader? Is that you under development?
So they is, I apologize. So we are working with a consultant group that was chosen by the Division of Transportation, North Carolina Division of Transportation. So that, we are working with D O T. We are working with Kettleson and then we are, and I am the project manager from the city side of things, yes. So we are, we are all working together, getting the word out. And I did send an email to each one of the Planning Board members with a link to the survey, to the, the virtual meeting registration link. And there also is a public comment map on this site that you can go to. And it outlines and shows all of the different projects that the Steering Committee has brought forward as priorities that they feel would be good projects to come forward with.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so you can leave comments on that map itself. So you can click on the map and leave a comment. So those are some good things. So that is our acceleration transportation plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions about those. But definitely, please check out the website. There's a lot of good information there about the project and the scheduling and again, the, the links to the survey and the registration form itself.
Can I ask some questions, Mo?
Sure.
When does the survey close? In November?
I don't know the exact date. I know we're trying to leave it open and through the whole month of November.
Okay.
Yes.
And what's the amount of the grant or do we know ahead of time?
The grant for the projects themselves?
Yeah.
We don't know those yet. Yes.
Do you have a feel for it could be up to as much as type of thing?
Well, it really depends on the project itself.
Yeah.
And the grants themselves, a lot for the Department of Transportation, state, the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Plan, they, they will take projects with, you know, some are very small, more like, you know, we can, we can have a hundred thousand dollar project and then some of them are over a million dollars.
Okay.
That isn't guaranteed money.
Yep.
The grants, you know, it really just depends. I have no idea. And it may be that we will find a grant that will do a portion of it or the design of it rather. And then we would have to find other grants for the true construction of it. But the, right now, I don't have an idea of those.
Is there a cap?
It really just depends on the grant program itself.
Yep.
Yeah, so I, yes.
And then how quickly can we access the grant funds?
It, there's, it just, it really depends on the grants that we find and what, and when they are open and they are accepting applications. So we don't have a grant now available. So this is just, this, the grant that we received was to prepare the plan. So that money has already been spent for the consultants to prepare the plan. And they will help us identify different groups and different avenues for finding the funding itself.
Yeah, so I don't want to walk into something. How, how quick could we get something going? Maybe that's what, how quick and how big? You have a feel for that? Like, hey, well, we can't get it done before the end of the month of November because we won't have the survey results.
Right.
And then the survey results will take us some amount of time in your mind to process through.
The plan itself should be completed in the spring. So then we'll have the plan completed and that will outline the prioritized projects themselves.
Okay.
And once we have those, we can then look to find grant opportunities. And once you apply for grants, really depending on the amount they have to offer, the project that is chosen as some of the more important ones to start with, that's, you know, it may be a two hundred thousand dollar project, but there may be some that we're like, you know, this is really important, but it's over a million dollars. How, how are we going to work this out? We have to find multiple grants. Grant applications that I have worked with previously, you apply for the grant, it takes several months before they even are able to weed through them. They'll contact you back and it depends on if there's a two level step for the application process or one. So it really, to, once you receive the grant or apply for the grant, it could be up to a year before you're even working on.
Yeah, thanks for that. One more question. The two thousand fourteen pedestrian study, is that in any way influencing what's going on?
It was definitely looked at, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's part of, part of all of this. But the transportation plan has more of the multimodal type of projects that are more up to date with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mo, if I could, quick question. Can you, for the listening audience, spend a few moments talking about how this works or fits into the comprehensive plan that was just recently approved by the Board of Alderman?
Yes. So this plan is kind of, works with the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan looks at all of the different aspects of a city. And one of them, one of the required portions of the plan, or sections of the plan is a transportation section. So in that, it talks high level, we need roads, we need, you know, hurricane evacuation. Then you take, you move forward and they're looking at, we need safety. We need safety crosswalks. We need to have safe pedestrian walk trails. So there's a whole plethora of different options that are part of the comprehensive plan. And so this plan itself will be able to take some of those actions and implementation actions and policies and help implement those. So we, we're starting to, you know, implement the comprehensive plan at that point.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
My question is way simpler. Does this tie into the bike road that I've heard in the Board of Alderman meeting that goes from Maine toward the south?
Yes, yes, that is part of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's the East Coast Greenway Project. That's. That's right. So that's what we have. So please, again, go online, check this out. If you have any questions, we are here to help and answer any questions. And I hope to see you next Thursday online.
Thank you, Mo.
You're welcome.
Just as a, as a quick note, Mo and I talked a little bit about the U D O text amendments and items like that, that we submit them to the Board of Alderman with our recommendation that there's a lot of, the text amendment language in there that's been redlined and yellow lined and everything else. And with a lot of different explanations. So what we're going to do on the next round is come up with a little bit more information for the average user, somebody outside of the Planning Board that can look at it and know what's being changed, how it's being changed and what it means. Put a little bit more description, almost like a bulletized list. So it'll be just say, you know, whether it's a new or revised, what it was, what we're recommending, and then a brief description. So that way, when people go through the documents, they'll be able to find a section. It'll be perhaps a little bit easier to understand. I hate to have things be buried into a document that, you know, I don't want anybody to think that we're sliding anything in. So this way it'll make it a little bit clearer for the person reading it. So we'll work on that next time around. Thank you, Mo.
The next update is an update on the Southport twenty fifty comprehensive plan that was just adopted. So we're so excited that it's been adopted. So I have placed at your chairs a copy of the action matrix that is found within the comprehensive plan. And this is prepared and put in the plan as a way to start your prioritization for implementing the plan. So this outlines all of the policies within the plan and then those strategies that can help implement those policies throughout and who and how they may be able to take place. So these include low hanging fruits, short term type, easy, let's, let's get this finished. Or there may be some ongoing issue or ongoing projects that we've got going on. So we're already taking care of that. So we're, we're well on our way. We also have our midterm, that's kind of a three to five type a year timeline. And then after, over that is going to be our long term. But we need to look at all of those. So we can't just look at the long term or the short term. So we want to make sure that we can successfully implement this plan. So I presented this to you and I would love to get some input back so that the staff can compile some of the priorities that Planning Board has and staff will be also doing the same thing and where we want to be. And we need to look at how are these going to be accomplished? So these, these are how our actions, but it doesn't always tell us how to get there. And so that's part of this process as well is, do we need U D O updates? Do we need to look for grants for projects on the ground, such as maybe some of these transportation projects that come out of the Transportation Multimodal Plan? So that we can get those crosswalk enhancements or a new bike trail, so, you know, to connect some parks? Do we need to coordinate with different departments within the city? Do we need to coordinate with anyone from the county or state? So these are the things we need to think of when we're starting our prioritization is what are the next steps? It's not, it's not so much as, oh, this sounds great, but how are we going to then accomplish it? And staff will be doing a lot of that work, but knowing where to start is really the big picture here. Yes, ma'am.
So, microphone please.
I'm sorry. I just needed to talk louder. I would like to request an electronic copy of the Action Matrix, just to take a look. And has the city or the Development Office already organized this by short term, midterm and long term projects? Because that would be the first thing that I'm going to look at. But I hear you asking us to review those items and give you feedback. Do you have a format that you want the feedback in?
All right, let me, let me break this down. One, they are not in short, mid, long now. They, they are identified by policy. So as you move, if you go through your policy statements in the plan itself, that's how these are then organized right now. And then it does tell you whether it's ongoing, short, long, mid. Honestly, if there's a policy, I don't really have a how I want it to be sent back. I can put together maybe a form that would be helpful.
I'm just asking if it's okay to email you back or if you have something.
Oh, please, yes, please email me with your, your request.
My other question is, has the Board of Alderman provided any input related to priorities or the financial, I don't know what the correct term is, but the Office of Budgeting related to that?
Yeah, I agree with you that. That was going to be my question as well, that I would like to see the Board of Alderman give us the priorities with goal dates before we start taking a snap at this. Because we, we may have a different priority than the Board of Alderman. And I think that, I think it's like a chicken and the egg. I think it needs, the priorities need to start with the Alderman on what they'd like to have done first and then we can work from there.
But like the chicken or the egg, our comments may be helpful to them as well. It may be something that they don't see. I'm just asking how to get it back to Mo so that we're.
No, I understand. But I'm just saying, I, I think the Alderman had the biggest role in this on what they want done first.
I agree, but I, I would like to present the Alderman with some, with some staff and, and, you know, Planning Board recommendations. So we have somewhere to start so that it's not overwhelming. There is a lot here and, and it can be overwhelming if you're not.
Yeah. We could probably dump this into an Excel spreadsheet and do some sorts on that.
Yes, yes. And I don't want to make it too complicated and I don't want to have every single one prioritized from one to five hundred. I just, everyone, if you could, maybe give me your top three that you think would be a good starting point. Because we do have to start somewhere, but we have to take small bites. We can't, we can't go, go forward as fast as possible.
And I think it's worth tracking all that too, so that, you know, five years from now, we do a status update. How, you know, how are we doing? So are you just looking for us to give you, give you any other input other than just our, our top three? Or are you looking for something textual that, or it doesn't matter?
I, I think starting with where we want to start, we can kind of get an idea of where we want to start. And then we can start breaking it down and say, okay, this is where we're starting. We're starting with, let's just say transportation, because we've been speaking about it all evening. We're going to start from what it looks like everything's coming up top is transportation. So how are we now going to work that out? So that's getting the big priority themes or issues or then we can then break those down and how we're going to get those accomplished.
This is a comment from, from Mo, the staff and the rest of the team here. I think it was the last meeting, temporary meeting, at the end of the meeting, we talked about getting this into a matrix, but also weighting things like impact, effort, things like that, safety, multi-dimensional evaluation of this, so that you could float the things that are the most impact to the most people and the most value to the community.
I already have that written.
Sorry. And I agree with you, I think that they need to be marked by value and by cost. And value is beyond just the financial aspect of it. And so, you know, taking a look at this, I, my first inclination is to look at the prioritization of the policies. What are the most important policies? And then to go back and look at, how do you prioritize the short term actions? What's the low hanging fruit related to that for the city's benefit? Followed by, what are the most difficult and the most important? Because if we look at what's most difficult and most important, we might be able to combine some short term actions among other policies. So for me, electronic, I do a lot of that electronically. And so like you, I kind of want to play with it because we might discover some very big impacts very quickly. And we might find some things that are urgent for different funding types or grants.
Agreed. Thank you.
That's all I had to go over this. I just wanted to get it to everyone since the plan has just been adopted. So we can, we can really keep this momentum moving forward. I didn't want anything to stop. I know a lot of people like, once you get a plan, we're going to put it on the shelf and it collects dust or becomes a paperweight. But we're definitely going to make sure that that doesn't happen with this one. So, thank you.
So you will be sending this in an Excel form to us?
Yes, I can, I can, I can put this in an electronic form for you.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Absolutely.
So we should have this done by Q one of next year?
I mean, that's fine. I mean, however you, I mean, yes.
No, I mean, everything, everything.
Oh, yes. Well, maybe two, well, let's, let's, let's.
Maybe two months, two quarters.
Two quarters.
All right.
Two quarters.
There's certainly so much work in here to be done. Yeah, it's, and it's going to take some money too.
It will. And that's also looking at things that, you know, that we might not be as much of a burden financially. What, what are some things that, you know, it may be it's not as much of a priority, but we are able to take care of something that isn't going to need a lot of money or time or expertise to get something happening or moving through the city. So that is another side of this as well to look at and consider.
Do we have a section here for the rewrite of the U D O?
I don't know if it specifically says like a full rewrite, but I know that the U D O update is, is very common throughout this line of.
Okay. I just want to make, make sure, make sure that we actually have a separate line for that along the way, if we could. Thank you.
All right, I will keep going. So next slide, please. So the next section, we wanted to kind of give you an update of what's going on with the U, the U F I Development Ordinance, the U D O. As I spoke earlier, we, we talked about the the amendments for Z T A twenty five oh four, which was the amendment to Article three and Article eight that was approved partially by the Board of Alderman at their last meeting. So this just kind of outlines what was approved and what was removed from the use tables. So those pending text amendments that we included in the original packet will be added back to the U D O update considerations that I had put in your packet. So this list of U D O considerations came from Board of Alderman, from the Planning Board input and some staff input. And we will also be pulling some of the things from the comprehensive plan and into this list as well. The Board of Alderman is going to be, it's been requested that there, a discussion of this is be put on their November third agenda. And that's the first Monday. So that'd be a nine o'clock meeting on the Monday of November third to just start this discussion. I don't know how far it'll go, but I think that we want to keep these changes that, and priority of the U D O themselves, of what we all come together so that those can get moving again. Some of the themes that keep appearing are the updates to the tree protection landscape ordinance, some parking changes to the parking ordinance sections, looking at non-conforming lots, both sizes and uses, or maybe not uses per se, but dimensional standards for those, and then looking at impervious coverages for the lots. And part of this, all of this, also, we have to consider Senate Bill three eighty two. And part of this, all of this, also, we have to consider Senate Bill 382, the down zoning bill. So we have to be very careful of what we bring forward. And we need to, and we will be working with the city attorney with anything that we want to bring forward to ensure that it, it won't trigger that or hopefully won't trigger that. So that'll be part of the discussion as well. So I want to make sure that that was, that was cleared with everyone. So these are, again, these are, these were distributed to the Board of Aldermen and, and I wanted to make sure that you had a copy as well, because this will be coming back to the Planning Board once the Board prioritizes their, their requests.
So that's not a joint meeting, it's just a meeting of the Board of Aldermen to go through these. Okay.
And from what I know, just what was requested by the Board to add it to that, it was really just a discussion point, it wasn't, you know, so I think that it's just the start and there will be a lot more discussions of these changes. So it's just, just to bring, make sure that it's bringing, bringing it back to the Board of Aldermen.
Do you think there's sufficient information in there for them to set some priorities? I'm looking, some of these might be a little obscure. I just want to make sure that the Board of Aldermen have, have a nice set of explanations for all of these, so that they're not misunderstood, I guess.
Yes, so it was requested that staff receive these, like, just a few days before it needed to be distributed to the Board of Aldermen. So I anticipate prior to that meeting for their, for their agenda packet, we will be able to expand on these more and really go through and flush it out a little bit so that people kind of know where we're trying to go with these. Because I know that there are some that have some more context that could be added, definitely.
Sweet, is there any way that we can also perhaps group these? And we've got some parking, things like that, that maybe it's a little bit easier?
Yes, and definitely some organizations so that the themes, they're, they're together so we can, they can be easily reviewed, yes.
And I know it was a quick ask, I think it was like a week turnaround that they were looking for it, so, yeah. And I'm sure, based on the comprehensive plan, we'll have more work to do on it as well. Thank you.
So those are my updates that I have right now for the U D O, if there's any other questions. But definitely want to keep you up to date on what happened with the, the last amendment, then the bed and breakfast that will be coming back to you, and then the list of considerations. So if you have no other questions, that is it for my presentation for this portion, and we can move forward with the agenda.
Just quickly, if I could, Mo, thank you, very, very nice, very nice work. I appreciate the update. On the special events, for those that might not have seen the meeting, could you just give a two-minute outline of what went right, what went not so right, I guess? Or what, what caused the Board to say, hey, let's kick it back to the, and I was at the meeting, but I think it'd be better to have it come from you. You know, what, what, what are they looking for?
So the, when the changes came forward as requested by the Board of Aldermen, so we all reviewed the language that the Board of Aldermen had. And it was very specific, just a standard for the, for bed and breakfast. And it was basically stating that the, any special events could only have the amount of people staying at the bed and breakfast to be included as, you know, guests of the event. So if you have four rooms and they each sleep two, you could have eight people at your event, but you couldn't invite anyone else because you had to be staying at the bed and breakfast itself. At the public hearing, the owner of the Bed and Breakfast across the street, the Carriage House Inn, they expressed their concern, they had some questions of, you know, I understand limitations. I, I don't want to have these great big parties, I understand now. But essentially, you're, you're not just, you know, you're almost eliminating the ability for me to have these events. So that was a lot of the conversations, like, how, how can we find some middle ground that allows a few? And he gave some examples of situations where he had a couple that came to town that wanted to do a small wedding ceremony, but they had friends that lived in Southport. So they wanted them to come enjoy dinner with them after the wedding. And it was just, you know, six people, it wasn't a large gathering. Or there was one that he said that there was someone that came to visit and they wanted to invite their parents over for, for an afternoon. So those types of things weren't considered in that, the, the language that was proposed. So the Board wanted to make sure that staff did meet and discuss these kinds of issues with not only the fire, because they were looking at the capacity of the, of the property or of the building, the occupancy for those. So we're going to be working with the Fire Marshal. We're going to also be, like I mentioned earlier, looking for input from the Bed and Breakfast owners. So if they have some ideas that we haven't thought of, since they are operating these establishments, so that we can, you know, make sure that we're thinking of everything that we may not think of. And, you know, I don't own a business that has events, so maybe I, there's something that isn't, that I don't know that we're missing. So, so that's where we're, I'm going to be doing some more research from other communities and then talking to the Bed and Breakfast owners. And then we'll be bringing this text back to the Planning Board for review.
Great, thank you.
Mo, I'd like to ask a question unrelated to what you've talked about already tonight. Is there any update or, or how things are going with short-term rental properties in the town? I know there were talks of using a service or a software to identify them. And I'm just curious what that status is today.
Yes, we have a platform that we use called Granicus. And they scour all of the different websites and they will find the units that, and we've given them all of the different elements for those that are compliant or not compliant. So if they had a registration, that there was a deadline date from 2021, if they met that, then they're grandfathered in. And if they're in the business district zoning or in a central business district zoning that they are operating a short-term rental, they're allowed to do those, those are right. So then they will go through and they look at the zoning and they look at if they're doing short-term, long-term. So, and so then they flag those for us. And we're able to go to the site, look at those that are compliant or not compliant. We, we double check to ensure that they are using the right elements, components for the, to show that they are or are not compliant. We have found some that they, excuse me, that they state that aren't compliant, but then we go back and we look and they're doing a homestay. So they are allowed to have that in the residential district as a homestay. So we, so then we can work with them to make sure that we show that those are compliant. If we find one that is not compliant, we send a letter. The company itself will send the first notice of violation to the property owner. After that first letter, they will give them a date to cease operations. If we find that they are still operating, then we will go then forward and send from the city. Well, the first one comes on city letterhead, but then the city, then we take over, send the second notice of violation. Then if it is not, then we have to move forward with our fines and making. But most of the time, we have been very good, it's been a very good compliance record. Most people, they're like, okay, and they'll either change it to a monthly rental, which we are allowed to have, or they will cease their operations. So that, you know, we have been able to get them, those to be lowered.
So it sounds like it's successful so far?
Yes, it has been very successful.
What's the definition of a homestay?
A homestay is when there is a single-family home that is renting out a room. So you have to be living and staying at your, at the same time the guest is staying with you.
Thank you, Mo. Anybody else have any questions, Mo, at all? Okay, thank you. Next up is a discussion, an update regarding the handbook, also known as the Primer for new members. Ed and Doug and Maria, newest members have put together a nice document, which is a good start. The idea behind this is to provide members a 25,000 to 50,000-foot overview of items that the Planning Board is involved with and recommendations that are made to the Board of Aldermen. It's not meant to be procedures, because that's what we have staff for. Staff are the ones that'll tell us in the weeds what procedures have to be done and how they're done. But would one of you like to give an update on this?
Okay. Um, I think each of you have received a copy of what is called the Primer. It has an executive summary page, which is really an outline of the elements that have been discussed, the purpose of the Primer, what our reference authorities are, how the city determines its priorities, as well as the function and responsibilities of individual members. We went through a number of rabbit holes and discussions to get to this, looking at what are the core processes of a Planning Board member? As well as when you look at calendar of events for the Planning Board, looking at how projects and their statuses are presented to the Planning Board, as well as the number of applications or variances. We continue to develop that, using it and wanting to use that information as historical trends to be able to better assess and make determinations for the Board. When you look throughout the text of the Primer, you'll see that things are laid out with the authority and resources. And one of the goals was to help an individual who's new to the Planning Board realize that there are some things they should know. And this kind of points them to resource documents where they can look up information, they can understand, so that when they come to a Planning Board meeting, they're able to ask a question or position their response in such a way based on those resources. And it includes the UNC School of Government. It also includes the Development Services Planning Department. When we went through a number of the administrative bodies and the review procedures, what we did was we high-level outlined them. We had a little more work to do, I think, in figuring out if there are other items that should be in here. But essentially, by outlining what the actions are and what should be reviewed by the plant, staff, what should be reviewed by the Planning Board, it allows a new member to realize what to expect, what they should be looking at when they get assigned as a new member here. Um, we've also included a little of the quasi-judicial, the Board of Adjustment for variances, because one of the things that we came to a conclusion on, if the same variance comes up over and over and over, perhaps we need a U D O ordinance in order to address what's being missed from that. We don't, we as new members, and again, I'm speaking for the three of us, and Doug or Ed, please correct me if I misspeak. But the reality is, we joined the Board with no real historical background related to what's going on in the city. We had to do our own research through the minutes and look at that. But there is very little historical data related to Board of Adjustment variances or issues, because those are things that may come up. We also looked at what our Planning Board authorities are in Table 2.1, page 40, and whether we are an advisory recommendation or a final decision. We worked with city staff, Wendell and Mo to discuss how major site plans work and how, how deep we have to go in the rabbit hole to figure that out and who's doing what. So it's been interesting in running through that. And then we also incorporated into the Primer the Robert's Rules of Orders, as well as best practices for Planning Board members related to consistency and staying in our lane, advisory versus final roles, to make sure that we're doing that. And I think you saw that tonight in some of the questions, as well as in our questions related to priorities by the Board of Aldermen.
This is nice work. I absolutely enjoyed reading through it. And it's not always that you can read through documents and go, yeah, this is really exciting. It really is nice work, especially with some of these technical jargons and things like that. One of the things that I got a real kick out of was that, that were the tips and pitfalls that you put in there. That'll say, hey, just to kind of give you a quick, you know, awareness of, you might want to watch out for this or you don't want to overstep your bounds and that, this is a Board of Adjustment type of thing. I, I, I think this is a nice start, I think it's directionally correct.
I would like to recommend tips and pitfalls in the U D O as well, because as we go forward, we have citizens and residents who would benefit from tips and pitfalls. And although it was Ed's idea, we carried it through and we had a lot of discussions related to those items as to what's really our role.
Yep.
And how do we balance that with the vision of the city? Because the most exciting part about being on the Planning Board is looking at the 2050 plan and seeing how the city's going to lay out and what our role is and what it's going to look like in the future.
It, it's fantastic, thank you.
Doug?
Yep, comments?
Essentially, what we're looking forward tonight is just the Board to say, hey, I think you got it about right, continue or continue with some qualifications.
I, I would say continue, and I've got a couple of, some feedback that I'll provide to you along the way. Just a small modifications that I would recommend, and whether you use them or not, that's up to you guys. But just some small items, but I think this is just a great document. It's, you know, when you look at having 17 members come through this Planning Board over a couple of years and having something like this, none of us are going to be here forever. And having, having a document that people can at least read, if anything, even if they apply for the position, I would recommend if the city says, hey, you want to be on the Planning Board, read this document first and say, do you still want to be on the Planning Board? Because you might want to do cemetery instead, because it's not, not as much work. Just put in a plug in for cemetery too. But I, I, I think it's awesome. I think you guys have done a swell, I hate to say swell, but I'll say a swell job.
If you'll provide us your comments, our next meeting, we'll go through the comments specifically. And I'll tell you that our group, as a small subcommittee, we actually keep minutes of each of our meetings so that we have the ability to go back and see our reference. Now, I don't know if that's always appropriate, but it's a way to show how we got to, to the final outcome.
So a quick question. See, and we're all pretty much knew most of us, except for, Brett has been here for, I think, half a century or so.
Yeah, but even this is like the Cliff Notes to, of the reminder to go back and look at, what are we supposed to be doing?
Yeah, and what's our role? Yeah, now I've lost my train of thought. So, but I, I like it a lot. I think what I was going to ask you was, just out of curiosity, what was your, when you were doing this, what was your lowest pain point? And what would, what did you find to be your largest pain point?
I think we were all agreed, and Maria hit it, and I mean, you're, you're filling it too, which is, it's, this is in many ways a job that is exposed, or requires exposure, a lot, large, large amount of information. I mean, all the way from the state, the county, municipal, and then at the municipal level, just a ton of information. And trying to figure out how to guide us again, or somebody like us again, through the process in an efficient way, I think is what we're going for. We also talked a lot, I mean, you kind of started this, Chair, Maria mentioned it. We had a chance to meet with Mo and Wendell. Is the idea of it being functional not only for the Planning Board, but helpful for the staff as they relate to the Planning Board? But also, and this is the challenge, is to figure out how to make it useful for anybody in Southport as they want to relate to the Planning Board too. And it could be a primer, a primer to them as well, yeah.
One of the, one of the bigger pain points was reminding ourselves that this was the Cliff Notes version, the Primer. And it should be simple enough, because we kept going down rabbit holes using examples. We had to pull ourselves back to what is our responsibility? We only make recommendations. And then we had to remember that it, the thing that all of us wanted was the participation in the 2050 vision, right? Where is that vision going? How do we help translate 2050 and implement it? But how do we do it in an efficient manner? And even though that's what we wanted, we had to pull ourselves back to our responsibilities or to the Planning Board and to make those recommendations and to verbalize them. So I think in many ways, it helped Ed and Doug and I become a unified group, more or less, because we're starting at the same place at the same time. And we have differences, we each want different things, but we were. And we have differences. We each want different things, but we were able to look at what our role is.
Ed?
I think the biggest takeaway for me, not from a pain point, but from a forward-looking statement, is a lot of what I've seen so far has been very reactive as to things that we're seeing coming through the staff. But I think we, we need to reserve a, a good chunk of our agendas moving forward to the twenty fifty plan specifically, and how we're going to methodically prioritize that. And then when those things get teed up, how are we going to a timely integration into the UDO and wherever else it needs to be to codify it? So I think a much more proactive look. There's always going to be a reactive part of our agenda, but we're going to have to reserve something that's very proactive to help us move forward. So we're not fighting behind the ball.
I, I agree with you. Being proactive, it'll, it just makes it so, makes it so much easier for everybody to know the different land use requirements. If you, if you wait till after the fact, it, it never goes well, it never goes well. And we've seen some of these meetings at the Board of Alderman with a crowd full of people in here that are are reactive to something that wasn't done, or that they weren't very keen on, I guess, if you will. So yeah, you're right. If we can have part of that in our agenda, as far as, it's going to be a busy couple of years really to get that.
One last thing, one last thing, Chair, is that something that we hit upon that was both funny and points of discussion, is that the planning board's advisory recommendations for the twenty fifty plan and the city has to take into account the physical, social, and economic well-being. It's not just about future land use. It's about, is this a physical well-being for the citizens and residents? Is this a social well-being? Is this an economic well-being? Because if we have pie in the sky development without the foundation of the budget or the grants, then we're actually doing a disservice. And we spent a lot of time because we represented, social is Doug. You can't eat certain things is mine. I'm big on economic. And we looked at the project management and the proactive with Ed, so we each took a different portion of that. But I would like to welcome everyone to remind themselves on a regular basis of the physical, social, and economic impacts of the planning board.
Great, thank you. Did you have a timeline when you, you folks are thinking about first draft?
We want your input and then we'll.
Okay, yeah, mine is simple. I, just a couple of abbreviations and things like that that I would extend, but not a big deal, easy to do. All right, thank you. Really, I, I applaud all three of you. You've done a nice job with this. Looking, and looking forward to the final, to the next draft, I should say. Mo, you're up again. Project Dashboard, how are we doing?
I'm going to let Wendell take care of this one.
All right. I think it was delegated then, huh?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. How's it going? So Project Dashboard's going on. I implemented, started working with it back in, on the sixth. I've updated our zoning tax amendments, variance cases, special use permits, all the quasi judicial proceeding things to include appeals as well. And it's ongoing. I didn't know if there's anything you wanted to ask specifically about Project Dashboard?
Just, just that we're making progress and that we're shooting for a November first draft?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir. We are making progress and we are shooting for a November first draft.
Well, well said. Just so that for the, listen to public, the pipeline slash dashboard slash pipeline report is really just a overview of all the different projects that are in flow right now in the planning board. So that, you know, whether it's a major site plan, whether it's a UDO tax amendment that's just been recently accomplished. But it's also to provide the Board of Alderman on the dashboard side a one-page overview of what's been accomplished through the planning board as well as the Planning Services Department. So that way, they have an updated report on at least a quarterly basis. And the tough part is with the dashboard is actually collecting all this data from a couple of years of things that are still in the pipeline. Once we have that, then it'd be a lot easier to maintain. It's just adding these new things in. And it's also good for the public that we'll put it out on the city's website as well, so the public can see what's happening and where it's happening and when it's happening. So that things like even the recent annexation of Osprey with the forty-four, forty homes or so, that data actually be on there as well, so people understand how these things are working. So, looking forward to seeing the first draft.
Excellent. Looking forward to presenting it.
Wendell, so I don't know what's been communicated in terms of requirements for this or what we're looking for. But we're looking for full lifecycle for any one of those types of tasks. And then an estimated when it's going to be landing at different milestones, so we can kind of, like a tsunami prediction type thing, what's going to happen? When is the planning board going to actually receive it? Is that in the scope of what your, your?
Yes, so everything that I've implemented has been historically, is already done. So I, I put in the, 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 the package dates that we receive the package. And I put in the date that it was either confirmed as complete package or denied, which a few of those ran into. And then I put in when it went before the appropriate board that, that package went through.
So I'm, I appreciate the historical context, but I think what I'm recommending is that our focus be on future looking, where you have all those milestones with, you know, actuals to date. And then what does it look like to complete the lifecycle of that particular initiative? And when do we think, what month or whatever, what date, what year that it's going to be completed? Does that?
Yeah, and as that comes, that, that will implement those. Okay, yes, sir.
You can tell there's a lot of project manager, project managers behind this table. So we're, we all think on Gantt charts and, and goal dates and key indexes and basically when things are coming due, and so that we're proactive and not, not doing the reactive part. So, and we also think that Board of Alderman should have that sort of information as well. So that way, they, they know what's going on in the city with these different types of things. So, thank you. Nice work. You know, if you want to send that out, if you want to send a, a really rough draft out, let's say at the beginning of November, just to get a kind of a quick feedback from, from the board, feel free to do that. So that way, if you have some recommendations, we can send them in and add to it and see. Because it's a, should be a working document. So, but the easier the information or the, the more succinct the information and usable, I think we're better off. So yeah, if you want to do a to-date type of draft, begin in November, that'd be fine.
Well, yes, sir.
Super, thank you. And I trust you, you're having fun doing it.
Yes, it's a, it's a hoot.
I, you know, I know how much work it is. It was easy for me to come up with, these are, here's the things we'd like. And filling in those blanks, it's really going back and digging a lot of that data. It really is. And I appreciate your hard work. I know it's not easy. So we, we all appreciate your work. Thank you. I appreciate the honesty. All right, rolling along here into other business, planning staff, any, anything for us tonight?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Super. Alderman, Alderman liaison, anything for us tonight? Come on down.
This should be really interesting. Couple of months ago, Chairman Ashley gave the three new members an assignment. And I thought, that means, but that must be the most sadistic man on the face of the earth. We've got three new people coming in, and he gets, he takes this ton of paper and says, hold this and make something out of it. And you guys went, okay, have it to you by Wednesday. And that's pretty much what you've done. You've put together a document that, I like the idea when somebody is applying for the planning board. You want to read this before you think about this? Because there's an awful lot of stuff in there that people don't understand the complexity of what you have to do. The amount of thinking, the amount of research, they don't even know where to go to find it. And you guys have taken some, you drilled a whole bunch of deep holes in there and you've pulled a bunch of stuff out. I like the pitfalls and all that sort of stuff. As you said, you can tell they're project manager type people here. You like deadlines, you like, you like to see this, 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 and this. That's kind of the way I've always worked. I had to have something, I said I was going to do something here, I had to have regular updates. I like that. That way people know where everything's going all the time. That really works well. You guys do a lot of what I call if-then thinking. If I do this, then this may happen. Is that good or is that bad? Do I need to do a rethink? So you guys have done some really, really good work. And I think it, it says a lot about you, and I think you're going to bring an awful lot to the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Appreciate it. Great deal. All right, let's go through the comments from the planning board on the phone. Bob, anything for us tonight? Bob, you're on mute, and he might not be on. Yeah, he's on. Okay, we'll take a pass on that. Kevin, anything for us tonight?
No, no, I think it's a great meeting. And one thing I would like to add to your credit, Larry, was at the Board of Alderman meeting, certain members of the Board of Alderman wanted to continue what we want to do or see done on the text amendments. And our chairman stood up at the podium and was, and was very persuasive and persistent. And making sure that those certain amendments that were necessary did indeed get passed. So everyone, if you haven't watched it, you should, because Chair Ashley did a phenomenal job that evening, and I just want to congratulate him.
And thank you. All right. Let's see, going around the table, let's start with Doug.
Nothing further, Chair, thanks.
Okay, Maria? Super, thank you. Ed?
Nothing.
Fred?
I have one thing, one more thing to ask, Mo. And a citizen asked me today about down Robert Rourke. I'm imagining they're talking about the access point for the, the second phase of Indigo. They must have started moving some earth there for access, and I haven't been down, down there to look. Do you, do you have any knowledge of that, or?
I don't have any knowledge of that, but I know that, that, and I have on my, on my calendar, I need to call the county. But I know that they have started, that they did get their preliminary plat, so they're able to go ahead and move forward with the infrastructure. But I don't know the timing of that right now. So I will be getting those updates soon.
Thank you, thank you both. Anything else, Fred? Good? Thank you. So we talked about a lot of things tonight. Along the way, we do need to talk about goals for twenty twenty-six. Think about where we're going. I think we've already got one big goal, which is starting to implement different changes of the comprehensive plan. But if you have some other things along the way that you'd like to have considered before the board, start thinking about that so that in January, we can at least start some goal setting for the year, for the, for that calendar and not the fiscal year, knowing that it ends in June. But at least if there's anything else that you have with respect to whether it's a UDO tax amendment, whether there's other things that you'd like to have considered before the board, like to have that done if you could. Also, we're making some progress on the rules and procedures, rules and procedure. We have a special meeting set up for October twenty-ninth, nine to eleven. We're also looking at a second date of eleven-six, in case we don't wrap it up. Fred and I were talking, I think we're making three pages for every single meeting, maybe four pages. So we're making some progress. So I'm hoping that we'll finish that up for the end of October, so we'll be able to get our first draft out for everybody to review. And if we need to, if you're available, like to do a second meeting or another meeting on eleven-six, just so that we can get this done, get the rules and procedures done for our November meeting.
Question, Chair?
Absolutely.
We've done three pages, six pages. You've made comments. Are you able to provide us a draft that we can see where you've made your edits so that we are able to comment on those if there are any changes going forward? It's kind of like, we've talked about it and we're blind, just so that as we go forward, we have that working document.
I have not, Doug asked me for the same thing, and I suggested that. I didn't want to do that because then we're going to have all kinds of drafts going around before we have our first draft. Because we, we haven't been going back and making changes. I'd rather continue on with the first document, than put that together and submit the draft to everybody to review it that way.
My thought process was that if there are changes made that maybe were misinterpreted when they were documented, because you're the only guy keeping notes on that. That's something that kind of, we don't want to, we can do it at the end, but in general, that's something that we can't see.
No, I understand. And I, I understand what you're saying. I just want to be really careful that we don't go back and start rehashing things before we actually make it all the way through the document. So, but I, 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 I hear you. If I can, if I can have some, an opportunity to do that, then I'll, I'll see what I can do before the next one, but I won't promise you.
Chair, did you say six or seven November?
We've got, we're looking at October twenty-ninth and then eleventh, November sixth. Is that what we sent, sent out today, Wendell?
Yes, sir, the sixth. Thanks.
And that will be, that's, that's a kind of a last one, just in case type of thing. Hopefully, we'll be able to get through the next part of it, through the rest of this document, through the next meeting. And that, if we need to, we'll cancel eleven-six. So, yep.
The twenty-nine, was that nine?
Nine to eleven at Indian Trail. Both of them will be nine to eleven at Indian Trail. Then after that, our next meeting is November twentieth. And I want to suggest that our meeting after that in December, if we don't have anything before us, because it's the holiday season, Christmas, and everything that a lot of people are traveling. So if we don't have anything, we'll put it before the board in November to determine whether we need to have a meeting in December or not. I, I know that's a big travel time, families, and families always come first in my book. So just to be aware of that, that we may not have a meeting in December. Okay. All right, anything else for me at all tonight? Everybody, once, twice, three times? All right, not seen anything. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
We adjourn?
Motion been made. Thank you, Fred. Maria's second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you, everybody, tonight. Good work. Good night, Southport, and we are adjourned. Thank you.